Patricia Stevenson.
Pat Stevenson.
Bernard Hughey walked them all just about every day.
Let's call a meeting to order. We're all present except for Tammy. Item two, at the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda of July the 3rd, 2018. Anybody? Item three, discuss 2018 local and arterial streets. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, City Manager. This is a presentation on local and arterial streets. We're kind of laid out that way because we actually have two programs we work on. One is called the Arterial Street Program and one's the Local Street Program. There we go. We're going to, I'm going to start off the discussion here and kind of get into some of the work's been done, particularly with contracting on these projects and the program. And the agenda here is we're going to talk about the arterial street and how the selection process is for going to and selecting streets on that program. We'll talk about past projects, what the current project is, and we'll get into upcoming projects or upcoming needs on the arterial streets. And similar things on the local street program. And then we'll talk a little bit about alternate selection criteria system we may consider for improving our, how we go through selecting the street systems. And then there'll be some discussion on street maintenance and also end up with talking about the expenditures. These are basically expenditures over the last five years on the street program, which includes these and I think also includes some of the work on constructing new streets, such as Cleveland, Willow Road's under construction now being completed. And those. Okay. Arterial streets, selection criteria. The selection criteria for the arterial streets, and I'll get into just in a minute where those, where those streets are, is we do try to do a, every two years, we do a visual inspection of the arterial streets. And we can do that because there's a limited number of them. We can drive those, do a visual inspection. Basically, we look, you know, the cracks, alligators going on, potholes. And we also look at the issue of utility repairs, if they've affected those streets. And then we basically come up with a spreadsheet that gives a condition number based on the condition of the street. And we use that to identify the worst streets and work from that. Now, for the arterial street, we do improvements for streets over 600 average daily traffic. There are a few arterial streets in the system, such as East Market, that's east of 42nd Street. It's classified as an arterial street, but the traffic volume's so low that we don't really include in this program. And it's, there's just not a lot of demand there.
Do you do that by traffic count?
We do that by traffic count, right. We had traffic counts on the arterial strike. Most arterials are well above this. There's a few like that out in the outskirts of the city that are called classified arterial streets, but there's no real demand on them. Then we take that data and put it into our five-year plan for improvements based on the needs for the streets. And we'll go to that, cover that in just a minute. However, we'll point out, we'll show you that the five-year plan does get revised when we go through the budget process, because we can show you the needs, but budget doesn't always, or is not always able to accomplish that. Okay. Kind of criteria for selection. We'll talk a little about the past projects, current projects that have been going on, and what we need in the future. And that gets into, this is a detail we brought forward, you may have seen before in the campus orientation and other things. But what we show in black is the, basically, the arterial streets, which are identified here in black or red, that have been completed from the start of the program, '98 till 2017. Actually, we do have an error here. This section of Broadway right here is complete. And I'm sorry I missed that in the diagram, but we'll point that out. That has actually been completed. What we're showing in red is the roadways and the arterial system that are yet to be brought up or improved to the current standards. Okay. Now, I'm going to go over the last five years of the work on the street improvement program, the arterial street program. And the first one is back in 1314. We did Broadway from the Union Pacific Railroad to 16th Street, right on the east side of downtown. And then the next year, we were able to do Broadway from Washington to the railroad, right through the downtown area, including, we actually, both that was mill and overlay, but on the front of the, between the library and the post office. The post office, excuse me, post office and the courthouse, we actually did full depth PC concrete pavement in that area because of the traffic demand there. In 1516, most of the funds were focused on the local street program. A lot of funds went into that program. We didn't really put any funds in the cap improvement fund or in the street improvement fund. However, we did improve 42nd Street intersection just out from 412 because of truck movements there. That was done out of the cap improvement fund in that year. But the street improvement fund was not funded that year. And 1617 is our current project, which we have under contract now, and that's Broadway from 3rd to 16th Street, right in here. That will almost complete the Broadway corridor. We have one other project, which actually are looking to budget, been budgeted for this year to complete Broadway from 16 University. That's what we're doing this year, is, whoops, excuse me. Go back. I missed one here. Broadway 3rd to 16th Street. Broadway of 3rd to 16th.
That's already done.
Yeah. This is, this is what we're doing in '18, is Broadway from 16th to University. Sorry, I missed that slide there. But this is what's being done. This is a mill and overlay program. We're also including ADA ramp construction in this program. It's about four blocks of about four-lane pavement, it's White Street Broadway is. There's the contractual cost that's involved with that project. Okay, we'll talk about, talked about the five-year plan that we have on arterial streets. And this is our five-year plan, so it's based on the needs. And you can see, this was done back in 2017, but we had 1718 up through 2022. About, about $6 million anticipated needs for the arterial streets in this program to, in this five years. And that would get us through the program, get us through the streets that have, in the program. Of course, then we start over with the streets that we originally started off in '98. However, I'm going to update you to this as the revised per the budget. In 1718, we were only able to budget $1,403 for the arterial street. And in this current budget, 1819, we're only able to budget $1,209. So we have reprogrammed, moved these streets' needs forwards. As you can see, getting it done in the five years, it still increases. Some of these years, there's substantial needs in arterial street program, if we want to stay on that schedule and try to complete remainder of our needs in the next five years.
Robert, was there any help from ODOT?
No, this is.
In that five-year plan?
There is not. There's no ODOT funds in here. This is basically a street maintenance program. It's a major street maintenance program, but we replaced the pavement, but it is not the, we are actually, in this program, we are actually building, overlaying, and reconstructing the existing streets. We're not widening or adding new pavement as such. That is done through the other improvement program, which ODOT does participate in, which we've done on Willow Road and on, we're doing on Cleveland Street. But those funds are dedicated there. No ODOT funds in this project. These are all local funds.
Robert, you said these were, this is the revised. How much, how much was originally budgeted in those two years? You know?
Go back. How much was budgeted?
Yeah.
Well, this was, we put this again, this was the projection of what was the needs were. This is what was budgeted in 1718, that we're under contract now. And this is what's budgeted for the current budget year.
Right.
To finish out Broadway.
It looks to me, I don't know, we're pushing a lot of it further right. And I don't know where we're going to come up with $10 million or $2 million in the future to fix roads. One of the things that I think we hear most about is the condition of streets. So I'm disappointed that we're, we're not investing more than 1.4 or 1.3 on streets in the last couple of years.
Right. Well, on the, on the arterial streets, we'll talk about the local streets in just a minute. But that's correct.
Let me clarify too. It's not that we don't want to screw more money. We're resource constrained. In this particular instance, it was pushed to the right. Now, as you know, we did get some ODOT funding on some major streets, arterials that are being worked on now. But as Robert said, that was when you're widening it or doing other things. This is just money to do mills and overlays and reconstruction.
Surely the Randolph from Cleveland to Van Buren is not just mill and overlay.
Cleveland.
Randolph to Cleveland.
Broadway from, no.
Randolph.
Randolph from Cleveland to.
Because you know where Randolph splits, it's Randolph and James Street.
Yes, that's going to be.
And it's like the only east-west that actually goes through.
Yes, that's a very significant estimate.
But that's not just mill and overlay, and just mill and overlay, James and Randolph isn't. I mean, surely if we're, because it's been money there, we're going to do more than just.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, that would be, in my mind, that would be a, that's widening, that's changing.
You're going to have to go from two lanes to four lanes.
Yeah. Yeah. That carries a ton of traffic.
You're going to have to go from two lanes to four lanes, too.
Yes, and those PC concrete payments, yeah, they'd probably be, this is a much higher cost. It's basically go in and do replacement. However, the right-of-way cost, acquire right-of-way to bring that down to, take those two lanes, bring them into one.
Yeah.
The right-of-way costs are not in here. That, that.
Well, no, and also, I mean, 2.2 does not get that done.
Probably, probably not. It would just, it would just reconstruct. It would basically just, we would probably do white topping or some type of overlay on the streets there.
Yeah, I mean, we don't want to go spend a bunch of money there unless we're going to do it right, I imagine.
Right.
Just, that's one that clearly is high on the needs list.
Yeah. Okay. Any more questions on the arterial streets?
Robert, what's the life expectancy of the mill and overlay of the blacktop compared to?
Well, the engineering numbers we use, we develop for the mill and overlay, the average is seventeen and a half years before we anticipate should be back in and probably remilling, re-overlaying, re-mill and overlay the streets.
Do you think it'd be the same cost doing it the second time or?
Well, and it's, actually, we probably, the cost, we have inflation, which is payment costs will go up. But what we are doing here, relocating water lines, which will not be affected the second time. So we get back in this program, there will be some savings because of water lines, we do move those in this, this initial program. So there are savings because the water lines will be out of the way. So there'll be some increase in cost due to inflation, but substantial reduction because water line almost costs as much as a road improvement when we do these overlays.
And when we do them, do we normally do the approaches at each resident or we're just doing the streets?
They are, they just, we just do the street generally. There's a couple of issues there. If, if we do an overlay and we build up the center of the street, sometimes we have to replace driveways to keep, so they can get in and out to maintain those slopes. We make sure that when we do an overlay, that those resident slopes do not get any worse. If they're steep, they do not get over 11% because that gets probably getting out. The other one, if we had to add sidewalks at ramps and locations, typically, we have to redo the drives to get a sidewalk across the driveway. So those are the two cases when we do the drives. But we typically don't do the driveways. We just do the, we do, leave the curb and gutter and mill the pavement out and replace it, stabilize it, replace it between the curbs. Okay? Any other questions? Local streets, we'll talk about selection criteria and those, again, the past projects, current projects going on, and we'll see his future needs on that project as well. Get into that. Selection criteria. About 2009, Public Works actually developed a operating, developed a software package, actually had the streets, they had a drive-over program that went and drove all the streets and basically did a surface condition analysis on those streets and gave a report. And they could develop, from that data, they developed a program, it came in a program system that would actually project the good conditions of the streets and give you a number to identify the conditions. And then based on that, they would put together a street program. That, and that's how they ranked them. That program and data is outdated. The data's outdated. The program is no longer operable. So currently, Public Works is just using their experience and they have with driving the street systems, they drive the streets. So they use that and have used that to put together a priority list of streets that, the local streets that need to be improved. And the local streets are basically all those streets that aren't on that map for the arterial streets, except state highways, we don't do those. But that's basically, is included in the local street program. So they, they, from their experience, they put that list together. Here is, I'm going to give you a little information on the past projects. We've identified in this map, the improvements to local streets have been done through this year from 2002, 2017. These two are constructed this year. But from '16, you can see in red what was done. So there's been quite a bit of work done, but there's a lot of need out there. And the program started actually in about 2002. I mean, there was probably work done on local streets before that, of course, forever. But we established a program of using street and alley funds to go towards this program in 2002, tracked it since then. Last five years, I'll give you, go over the work that's been done on local streets. Here in 1415, you have France, Van Buren to Washington. That's approved, did Greg Drive, which is Wedgewood to Pine Oak Avenue, right in here, and Seven Pines. 12th Street, Pine to Walnut, on this location. And then in 2015, 2015, '16, there was a lot of work done on a modified aggregate quickset base, a seal coat done on, a lot of roads were seal coated in that program, some cost involved with that. I don't, unfortunately, I don't have a map for that, but they did a substantial number of streets in that program. And they did a pilot program and wanted to see how it'd work out for us maintaining or doing some street improvements. And they did locations across the city. Sorry, I don't have a map on that, but I don't have that information right now. And in 1617, we did the street improvements on Cherokee, 5th and 16th, right in here. That was done along with the bridge replacement that was done in location. It worked out good. Pine, 12th to 13th was improved. Elm, 15th to 16th improved. And these were, and then these local streets, these are typically fully removed, pavement and replaced with PC concrete. So, and a PC concrete life gives us a much longer life, although you do some crack sealing, the pavement's got a 50, 75-year life. It has a long life compared to our arterial streets. And in 1718, these are the streets that are under contract right now and will be seeing constructed over the next nine months. And that's 12th Street from Walnut to Chestnut, in this location. Harvard Avenue, Jackson to Midway is up in this location. And then we have Indiana, Jefferson to Adams, which is right, actually, it's right in here next to, right off from the high school, just east of the high school. So the current projects, and I think this is what we have funded for, called Local Street Program for in this year's budget. If you recall, there's Airport Entrance Road, that's budgeted. Kennedy Street, which is just off North Fourth Street. That's about five blocks of road. We actually designed it this year, but there wasn't enough funds to cover that. So it'll be, but it's already designed, so we'll add that in pretty quickly and get that completed. And then we have 4th Street, ADM Truck Lane, there's a truck lane in here. We're going to do some repairs on that, replace or reconstruct that truck lane to bring that back into condition. Local street current projects, that's just basically those projects where they fall. And then local streets' future candidates. If you go to the list that was provided on the streets, and this is it here, but this is the map that shows you, this are the other additional local street improvements that were provided by Public Works in their last update across the city. And then this is actually the list, we'll have two slides here covering this. But you can see Indiana, Harvard, and 12th are already under contract, would get Kennedy underway this year. And then these are the rankings, it's best we, as shown from Public Works at this time, going down the list for local streets, including down to there's, you know, 34 projects. And we've kind of, just over here, I'll let you know, we do kind of keep a running total of what we think these costs are, and you can see it's about $23 million.
Let me stop you before we go on here. I've got more complaints about Maple from 10th to 16th than I think any other stretch while I've been on city council, and your cost estimate seems kind of high there, looking at what Broadway is costing us from 16th to Campus. Maple is pretty narrow there. I mean, it's, it's in horrible shape. It's like the worst six blocks of road we have, but.
Yeah.
But it's narrow, it's not heavy traffic, it's, I mean, I'd really like to see that, one, I'd like to see it moved up. It's in horrible shape, but it also seems like there has to be an easier way.
Yeah, we, we show this in this total reconstruction and when we get in, yeah, we get to that, probably we do a full design, design it. It does look kind of higher compared to, we got, that's just one block, Pine for 13th, one block. We've got six blocks in here, so that's.
Well, Maple, it's just, I mean, it's just a residential street, and I know it doesn't carry huge traffic, but.
We've got to keep in mind when we're talking six blocks, we're going to be talking sidewalks.
Yeah, these do include sidewalks, do include water lines.
So I don't know if that's factored in or not.
They are. Sidewalks are included.
But we really just, I mean, at some point, we just have to bite the bullet. It's a really, really, really bad street. I mean, go drive it.
I agree.
It's in horrible shape. And I don't, I mean, I know it's going to be expensive, but there must be some easier way to do a street like that, that.
We're going to talk about that in a minute, if that's, if that was a candidate, because it sounds like it's pretty far gone.
And then also, before we get off this list, we've talked during budget, and you know, I've talked since about Maple Street around Adams.
Yes.
With all the new school improvement, that block or block and a half intersections, one of the intersections is done already, but, and already a sidewalk, but the street is, you know, almost impassable. Are we, have you done any, made any progress there?
I believe we've looked at it, and I think it's, is it asphalt? It's an asphalt street?
I, I don't remember.
I think it's full of potholes.
I mean, I've driven it, I don't know, 5,000 times, but don't.
We're going to talk about with the asphalt laydown machine.
Couldn't tell you what color it was.
That you recently approved for us to purchase. We're hopeful that we're going to be able to fix some of these streets that aren't completely gone in asphalt with two-inch overlay that will help prolong the life of that street and make it a better experience until we can get further into the list of the complete reconstructions. What Robert's highlighting for us, which I'm going to talk more about in just a minute, is we've got way more needs in streets than we do funding. And so how we prioritize this is not an exact science, so.
Right, squeaky wheel gets grease, so I'm trying to be squeaky.
Yes. And so probably we need to figure out, on that list of 34 streets that cost $23 million, which ones really are the highest priorities, so that if we don't get them in this year, we get them next year and not 10 years from now. So I, I agree.
Very good. Couple of things, yeah, this is basically on reconstructing these local streets. And that program is, on the local streets, we can't, there's so many of them, there's so many miles, miles of them, if you're going to miles. We can't get back to them, we, our experience is, we don't get back to them that often. So this is reconstruction, bringing PC concrete, which gives a much longer life. And, and they actually may get a little rough in the local streets, but they're there and they'll work, they'll be operable for a longer period of time. That's why we look basically PC concrete or hard surfacing, sometimes asphalt, but a full-depth payment on, on streets, while on arterials, we'll do mill and overlay. But we need to get back to them by their 17, 20 years. Want to talk a little bit about alternate selection criteria, possible alternative selection criteria. And what I'm just talking about is, is reinstituting or bringing up the speed, the, the drive-over program, bringing a program to re-drive all the streets. They have systems out there that will do as done before, drive all the streets and classify them based on, and it's based on surface condition. This is, it is a scientific method. It's not an exact method, because they don't do subbase, they don't go into subbase and they don't test the soils or the compaction. But it does, based on the road condition, would determine and classify the condition of all the streets in the system, then maintain that program, which would then, would give you your worst streets as well. And then I would suggest we might consider adding to that traffic demand. Now, on the residential streets, I would suggest that we probably would identify, one way is to identify traffic demand by number of residents. Basically, the number of units on a street and a residential street is a good indication of what the traffic demand is. On the collector streets, we'd probably go do traffic counts, as we would on arterials, to class, to do that. And then if we could drive the streets, get a classification on the condition, and then put this information into the system, provide the columns that provide a demand based on residential count or a traffic count, and then put together a weighted program that would then provide the recommended improvements on the streets based on condition and demand. And that's, that's just something for consideration. Again, this traffic program is probably $200,000 to $400,000 cost to get in to do a complete analysis on all the street system. I think it's a little over $200,000 last time we did. Any questions on, any more questions on the local streets?
I have a question on ADM. Can you go back to that slide?
Uh, I think it's this, let's see, right here.
Go forward like three slides.
Oh, I passed it.
There it is.
Yeah, right in here. Yes, that.
Is that?
It's from the 10th.
Is that going to be enough just on 4th Street with the new addition that they're building on? You've got a lot of big trucks coming in and out of there.
Well, I think the, the truck lane location and length is fairly well adequate for the use, I think. We have a turnaround down there. The problem is, the truck lane is, has deteriorated and condition needs some substantial repairs, which this program would address.
Is the new facility where the existing facility is, or is it to the east?
It's on, well, I'm trying to think. They are, they're doing an improvement on the 4th Street facility, and I, just to the west of the existing elevators. And I think they're doing, and I think they're actually doing utilities, is making a utility improvement as well on the south on that site. But that's just for the utilities. So it's on that, there is making improvement on that site, but I don't, I haven't seen any information on the increased truck traffic.
Parking facility on the site?
Excuse me?
Did you say parking facility?
No, they're making improvement, they are making improvement on our site just to the west of the existing elevators.
Well, you've got to get them off that, off of 4th Street somehow.
Well, yeah, there is, the truck link extends the full length of their frontage. And, and the way it was built, there's a turnaround, because both of the traffic comes from the north and exits the north, so there's a truck turnaround to south end, they can turn around and fill in that truck lane, going back to their drive to north end. Okay?
Thank you.
You want to cover street maintenance?
Yes, thank you, Robert. Everett Glenn would be giving this presentation, but he's not feeling well. So Everett, if you're watching on TV, get well. Street maintenance, one of the things that you probably have noticed is over the last year or so, year, a couple of years really, we've been trying to buy some improved street equipment to help our Public Works folks maintain the streets better. And so that's what we'll talk about here with crack sealing. We actually have laid down some asphalt in several locations, blading it. With that asphalt laydown machine, I think we'll be able to do a more precise job. We just recently, it was the last meeting or two that was approved, so we're looking forward to getting that in. And then we're constantly improving, grading roads that are unimproved now. Many of those roads have rock or shell on them now to help maintain them. There are many, many miles of unimproved roads in the city. And so our crack sealing, you'll remember, we used to contract out. We've got the equipment now, and we've got people that are out crack sealing quite a bit. You've probably seen it around town, you've seen it if you've driven Grand, you've seen it if you've driven Oakwood recently. Both of those arterials have been improved with the crack sealing that keeps, cuts down the water intrusion, which prolongs the life of the road. It keeps the water from getting to the base, eroding the base, which creates the need for a total reconstruction, which is very expensive. So crack sealing is a priority for us. You can see we've got color coded on priorities and things we've done. Here's Oakwood, we show, we just talked about Oakwood. Grand's over here somewhere, somewhere in here. Anyway, you've probably seen us at work, we'll continue to do that. The asphalt that we laid down, here's some, a map with some locations. And we did that at a relatively small cost, because we're doing it, this is just the cost of the materials, because we own the equipment and we pay the employees. So that's not included in this cost. So you can see, from that perspective, if there are things we can do, and there are some, not, not total reconstructions, that's not one of them, but on putting asphalt down, patching a road, we can do that. We also bought a patch hole machine. I guess we'll, that's later in the presentation. Here's some of, we talked about improving some of the unimproved roads with rock. Here you can see the locations, largely on the west and south part of town. And again, this is just the cost of materials, approximately $164,000. Every year, we budget a certain amount for unimproved roads, because even the roads that we put rock down on, the rock doesn't last forever. Here's some that we've shaled recently, a lot on Phillips and Breckenridge. Here's some that we've shaled recently, a lot on Phillips and Breckenridge. Again, that makes a, a road that you can maintain better, you can grade it better, it'll hold its shape better, it's firmer, holds up better when it gets wet. Equipment purchases, we, we bought a lot, and this presentation's basically focused on the last five years. So we'll go through, we bought this probably a year or two ago, the street sweeper's a little bit older, I saw it today out in Meadow Lake Park. A steel reel, wheel roller that we use to flatten asphalt, a trailer, a paint machine, which has been a big improvement. Uh, this isn't done with the paint machine, this is done with templates, but this is with thermoplastic. I, I know you've seen this all over town, every time we do a crosswalk, it looks really good, a lot of them have been redone downtown and a lot of them in the school crossings. And we're working to, to catch up with the arrows in certain areas, this looks like maybe Grand or Independence. And, so we're working really hard to get those markings back down, you can see the before and after. With thermoplasty, which lasts a lo- a long time, it looks really good, and we don't have to come back for several years. You obviously know where this is, on Main Street. We've spent over a million, a million two in the last four or five years on street equipment, and just here's, here's a listing. It does include some pickups and mowers, but you can see street sweepers, Mack trucks, asphalt lay down machines, pothole patchers. So we've made a significant investment, because we know, and, and streets is, I know it's one of your priorities and certainly one of mine, infrastructure and, and public safety and streets in particular. We all know, we drive them all the time. We're gonna show you how much we've spent, but it's not even close to enough, and you've seen a list of our needs just now. And here actually is the, the slide that shows our spending. We've made an effort to break this down, because as Robert said, we look at local streets and we have, we basically fund streets in three different locations. We fund it in a local street fund, we fund it in the street improvement fund, which is typically our arterial streets, which is why we have that category, and then we have, we do funding usually in capital improvement. And many times that involves reconstructions or overlays that involve ODOT projects such as Willow and Cleveland. I believe those are budgeted in capital improvement. So these are the items we've spent in these various funds. And in these last couple of years, or this last year, we just put the total of street spending in seventeen, eighteen, five million dollars. It doesn't sound like a whole lot, and when you drive around in the city, it sure doesn't seem like a whole lot, but it is five million dollars. And over five years, it adds up to, we've spent approximately twenty-three million dollars on streets in the city. Again, that's starting to add up, but as you can see, we're falling behind, because we need to figure out how to come up with more funding, how to dedicate more funding, and so we'll be working on those. Working on those ideas to come back to you in the future, because I think we all know, we need to spend more money on streets. However, I want everybody to know, we've spent twenty-three million over the last five years, which isn't an insignificant sum. That's about five million a year roughly, four point seven, something like that. So it comes out to about pretty much what we have budgeted this year. This is looking in the three different funds, four point seven million dollars. Now, a lot of that is dedicated to Cleveland and finishing that up and right away acquisition. When we do street spending too, we're not just talking pavement, we're talking moving utilities, fixing stormwater stuff, and we have ADA sidewalk requirements, as some of you clearly know. So it's very expensive to fix a street, and it's not just all in asphalt and, or concrete. Now we're really ready to discuss, you've seen we've spent twenty-three million dollars, and we've purchased over a million dollars in street equipment, but I think Robert just showed us that on this local street candidate list of about thirty-four streets, we've got nearly twenty-three million dollars, twenty-four million dollars of needs. And then I think we had over twenty million dollars in arterial needs too. So if you do the quick math on that, that is about fifty million dollars. Well, this is, uh, this is about thirty million or twenty-eight million dollars, so you can, it quickly adds up. We've got fifty million dollars in needs stacking up.
Or one eighth of the pipeline.
Yes. So certainly, the presentation tonight is to show you what we have done. It also shows you what we have left to be done. On the arterial street project, Robert told you that we've got about an eighteen year, seventeen and a half, I guess to be exact, on arterials. Most of our arterials, if not all of them, I believe are in asphalt. As you can see on, uh, let's see. Somewhere here, we showed you the map. Started in ninety-eight to twenty-seventeen. That's about, that's almost twenty years right there. And you can see from that map of about twenty years, we haven't got done yet, and it's already time to start over. So the presentation tonight is to highlight the needs, to show what we've done, and to have discussion on maybe things we can look at in the future to try and get more funding to streets. So I'll open it up to you, what questions do you have about the presentation or streets?
Joe, I, I have one question, just driving around, a, a lot of the streets that are really in bad shape have had repairs. They, they've gone in and cut out the concrete and repaired it with asphalt, which then drops down. Do we ever go back and refill those kind of repairs, or does that do any good? I, I don't know enough about it, but I, I do know that that's really a factor if you drive up and down some of these streets, that you can tell where they've been cut out and repaired, and then the repair sort of sinks.
Typically, our permanent repair is, is normally done in concrete. So if you're seeing asphalt that's sinking, initially, we repair holes with cold mix, and then typically we come back and cut it out and fill it with concrete. We are looking at, in fact, the repair that I think we just made on Broadway over by Washington, I believe we cut out the bad spot, we put a concrete basin and we laid asphalt on top for a better ride. But to answer your question, yes, we should, we're, we're striving to make a permanent repair. If the repair is failing over time, we just need to know about it and go back out and fix it. With our new pothole patching truck, it has capability for that pothole, you don't just fill the pothole, you cut out a bigger section around it to try and get to some good pavement, if there is some good pavement, and then fill the hole. So I think we'll see some improvements if they're, you know, medium sized to large potholes that have good road around them. Some roads, if they're alligator bad enough, you can't cut out to get to the good, good parts.
Well, there are, there are also some streets that, that we've gone in and repainted, but we've left the, the manhole covers down below the surface. And in some of those cases, they're down far enough that they would, I, I would think they could, if you hit them properly, you could damage your tires.
That's probably not by design, but typically we designed them to be flush with the road. So there could be a problem, we do have problems all over town with, and some of them are around manholes where there's a leak. And so it's either stormwater or sewer leak that causes the manhole to drop down. I do notice on, just driving today from Meadow Lake back to the city offices, on the highway that ODOT did, the manhole covers aren't exactly flush, and they're not flush on Gharid either. So you get them as good as you can, and I don't think there's, I don't think there's anything failing with those, or just, you know, a half inch or so below the surface, so you hit them. Or if you're like me, you try to straddle them and drive around them. I don't know if that's what you're talking about, or you're talking one that's sunken.
Hell, this, this is a residential street, it's probably maybe two blocks west of Van Buren and, and north of Gharid.
My guess is there's a problem there around the manhole that's causing it to...
But there's, there's a whole series of them, it isn't just one. I mean, these are, i- if, if you, if you drive down that street, you've gotta dodge the manholes, because they're, they're down far enough.
Which streets are on, it's a half block off of Van Buren?
It's, no, it's, it's either a block or two blocks on west, I, I don't remember, I've been up and down, I've driven it a number of times, but Tyler and Tyler, it might be one of those.
Okay.
I knew my president's idea would rattle up a lot of them.
I probably don't drive Tyler enough to know, but we certainly go out there and look at it, see if there's a problem or...
You won't have any trouble noticing.
Okay.
Joe, we do a lot of utility replacement. What kind of thought is giving to not have to do that again twenty, twenty-five years from now? We, every time we tap the street and remodel it, we move, we have to move utilities.
Yeah, that is the, the effort, is, that's why we do try to move the, the utilities from out, from under the street, because a lot of those street cuts you see are because there's leaks under the road. And so you've gotta tear up the road to get to the leak. And no matter how good a job you do, trying to repack the road, it typically has a tendency, it's more likely to fail in that area.
I think that's a big problem with the manhole covers, because that, that dirt underneath is going to wash out and it's gonna move down below, so it's gonna settle, sink.
Well, the manhole should be connected to a pipe down below, but the, the dirt around it should be compacted into base, and Chris could speak more, Robert too, the base and the compaction and all that stuff. But when it fails, a telltale sign is when the road starts to sink or the drain. We've had several of those, I, I couldn't even, in numerous ones, and we try to fix them with our concrete crew, one at a time, as soon as we can go and get there. I haven't heard about Tyler, so I'm, I'm thinking it's probably...
I'll, I'll check the street name, just to be sure, but I, I do drive it down somewhere in there.
I appreciate the investment that you made in the equipment, because I think that helps us take the dollars that we have for street repair a little further than we could otherwise, because we're doing some of it in-house. So I'm hoping that will stretch our street repair budget further.
Yes, I, I believe that it will, particularly on asphalt streets that aren't completely gone, that we can do some overlays on, and with the pothole patcher on a street that's good enough, that we can cut out a section and fix it. Many that are on that list, though, of thirty-four streets are really bad, like the ones you talked about and the other thirty-three.
Several years ago, we had a list that showed every street in Enid to the ten of about a hundred and eighty million dollars.
I think that may have been the list that was referred to, that Public Works and Engineering, they paid to have a company come and do that drive-by assessment, and we still have that list.
Scare you to death.
Right. The point is, the list is...
Makes this look like chicken feed.
Right. But this is, I would say, this is probably closer to being accurate right now, not on all the streets in Enid, but on the thirty-four that we've listed, and I'm sure we could probably add fifty more, because as all of you studied that list, there's probably some that aren't on there that need to be on there.
As part of that list is gonna be prioritizing.
And part of, that's why we tried to show you some criteria there on, on trying to make sure we come up the best criteria. I believe what we had on there was for collector streets, we use traffic counts, and for local streets, we look at how many people live on the street.
Yeah, I'm a little, I'm, I'm a little reluctant with the spending two to four hundred thousand dollars on a scientific list. We, we know what the list is, and end of the day, the, the roads that get more complaints are gonna get done, I don't care where it is on the list. Seems like maybe we shouldn't bother wasting that money. We know what the streets are, you know, that's not an entire street, that's a few blocks of street that...
If we work on that list of thirty-four local streets, I think that was twenty-three million dollars. Our current budget this year is about a million and a half, million four, something like that. We would have about a ten-year supply or fifteen-year supply of streets, unless we can increase the funding. So I think we're just highlighting there that if we want to have a more thorough, in-depth assessment of streets, we would look at having a, a study done, much like we do on others. But I, I tend to agree with you, we, we do have a long list of streets right now that we know need to be fixed, so...
I would ask, I mean, I know we talked about it in budget and it's a little more, but that around Adams Elementary, there's all that money being put in there, sidewalks done, line intersection's done, please, let's get that, at least figure out what we can do there.
I know streets has been, have to look at, I just don't recall what they, what their assessment was and what our approach will be. If it's a complete rebuild, well, that's, that's tough. We gotta get it on the list sometime soon and, and get an updated cost estimate. If it's something we can fix with, like we did with blading some asphalt or using the new asphalt lay down machine...
Let us know what the options are sooner rather than later, if you could. If you're about to spend much money out there, it'd be nice to have it all working good.
Understood. All right, if there's no other questions, Mayor, I think we're ready to move on to the airport item.
Item four, discuss the funding options for the airport terminal.
Let, let me kick off.
Gerald?
I'll kick off the airport terminal project too, because we talked about this last time. Ono specifically talked about the options, and he did a wonderful job. I think the first slide we're gonna start with is highlighting, in fact, I'll do that slide and I'll let Jennifer do the rest, she can, she can pile the rest, if, uh, let's see. All right, these are the three options that Ono presented that we had talked about last time. One was to accept that the design cost two point four million, I think we're there. We've bid it twice, it's two point four million dollars. It really doesn't matter what we started out to design, that's what we got, two point four million. Renovating the existing terminal had issues, and so it wasn't as desirable an option. And redesigning wasn't as desirable too, because it's gonna take a lot more time and you're gonna invest another two hundred thousand or so on fees. So the reason we've come back to you again to talk about this is to talk specifically about the funding. A lot of the extra funding has been identified and was talked about, would, would come through grant sources or the airport fund itself. And, but there is a portion that would need to be funded. So Jennifer, you wanna take it from there?
Evening. So what we have so far? The CEC engineering part is what we've either already spent or is encumbered currently with CEC for the engineering and what they spent for the architectural. Then we have the lowest construction bid at that amount, the two point four. But the bid did not include items for the kitchen, furnishings, uh, utility relocations, and then we have a small amendment with CEC that's possible. The kitchen, of course, would be your walk-in fridge, freezer, stove, oven, vent hood. The furnishings would cover all the offices and all the other rooms. The utility relocations, I believe ONG's the only one that would charge us. OG&E said that they would do it for free, and then we would move our water and sewer. The CEC amendment would have to be also added because of the FAA funding possibility, because they would be our grant administrator, and so they charge us a little fee to do that.
What does CEC mean?
That's the company that is our engineering service.
It's Cobb Engineering Services.
Cobb, okay.
The, the, the kitchen, we already, we already have a kitchen out there in the existing building. Are we going to use some of that equipment, or are we, is that, are, are we gonna buy all new equipment? What, what's the plan there?
The initial plan was to buy new, since it was gonna be all new building, and when we'd sell the old. But we've also thought through possibilities of using the old, but it's not in the best of shape either. So when you start off with something as bad as that, that might be a waste of time. So total wise funding, we would actually need to come up with a total of two point seven. And as we've said before, our funding source that we know that's already established, we have the one point eight. And the cash that we've already received on those, the private donation, and we are in the middle of invoicing shortly, in a couple of months. We will invoice the second year for Military Planning Commission, so we will have that three hundred thousand on, on hand, and then the airport fund of five hundred thousand. So cash on hand right now that we have already received is only one point three. So anything we would do that would be for the total, which if our total is two point seven, we would have to upfront that from somewhere, which would be a transfer from general fund or EMA.
The five hundred thousand, does it go away if we hire a new architect? Somewhere, the five hundred thousand goes away.
If you did your remodel, I think we would lose the OAC funding. Is that what you were asking? Okay. So the five hundred thousand that we would get from OAC, we would lose only if we did the remodel part.
Okay, okay.
Option, that would be the only other, uh, that, that he talked about. There were some downfalls if we selected the two other options, but... So we have one point three, you're looking at a two point seven total cost. And of that one point four million that we would have to upfront, we would approximately get about one million back in grants and funding. So there's about a three hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred thousand that we do not have grant funding to support, and so that would, we, we would have to find from another source. So of that, we have the one point three cash in hand, but to sign a contract, you have to have all the funding upfront. So we would have to get either, if you wanna call it a loan for, from EMA or, or the general fund of the one point four.
Go back and talk about that five hundred thousand dollars, 'cause I don't understand why we can't add that back in. why we can't add that back in if we're going to do new construction.
You can on the OAC.
Right there, right there on top.
Yes, we, we only put it, didn't put it in that column because it hasn't been received.
It hasn't been received yet.
And in fact, it hasn't been granted, but I think OAC is waiting for it to be awarded. Is that right, Alan?
That's correct. Uh, at the next meeting, they'll have a meeting in August.
October, my arnottic commission?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Assuming that the council has approved this, then that'll go before them and they'll give us a fund.
Okay, okay.
But that funding.
I don't want us to lose sight of a half million dollars.
Right. That funding source though, is a reimbursement. So we would have to spend the money upfront and then ask for the reimbursement after the fact.
That's the easy form.
Right.
Spend it upfront.
The two hundred thousand for furniture that you had on the slide, a couple of slides ago, the, you said it was for office furniture.
It was twenty, twenty thousand?
Yeah, it was twenty thousand, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah.
The gazindas weren't high.
That's why they kicked me out of supply. Yeah. Um, does that include, uh, like, uh, dining room furniture and stuff like that too?
Right, the new tables and chairs. And then for the military room that we partnered with and, uh, office furniture.
Okay.
And all those.
But includes the whole thing, dining area as well?
Right.
Some of that furniture's going to be here fifty years from now.
So am I? Maybe.
So we're looking at an upfront cost of one point four or a, a transfer that would have to be in place to be able to sign a contract. And of that one point four, we would get approximately a million of that back with grant funding, probably in between twelve months to eighteen months. Most of it probably within twelve months. So here we have our one point eight established funding. This is a possible additional funding, which, uh, he talked about at the last study session. The third year of the Military Planning Commission will be, uh, an option. It's not set in stone, but, uh, Mr. Cooper was pretty sure that they could give us another a year, another year for that.
Is that twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty?
It would be our nineteen, twenty budget year, correct. And then the airport fund supplying another hundred and fifty and then possibly getting two hundred and fifty thousand funding from the FAA. And then that brings us to a total of two point three five. So we have an unknown source of the three hundred and fifty that we would need to find to come up with our two point seven.
I think the crux of the presentation is if we want to proceed with the terminal as designed, it's going to cost two point four and with the ancillary cost, two point seven. Uh, some of those we've already funded though, the.
Correct.
Engineering and architectural fees. What it boils down to is it's going to take about three hundred and fifty thousand or thereabouts, um, to transfer from somewhere, probably EMA. The, actually it'll take more than that, as Jennifer said, but the bulk of that will be paid back in the next year to eighteen months, I believe.
What happens when it's paid back? Does it go, does it go back into the?
We would just put it back in EMA or wherever we got it. So it would be reimbursing is a way to think of the fund that it came from. The difference is this three fifty or so. We currently have in the budget four hundred, as we just told you, in the streets budget that we haven't put on here. It was intended to redo the airport road. That could be used to finance, uh, the terminal and it's already in the budget. I don't know if it, it may still have to be modified with the budget amendment as to where it's transferred to. But I thought that I had was that the airport road itself to me is better than some of the roads on that list. So a thought that I had was to repurpose that four hundred thousand if you wanted to, fix another street or maybe more, street and a half, and go get three fifty or four hundred from EMA. I did talk to John Wolfe just before the meeting. I wanted to make sure that this would not cause us any issues with our colleague funding and finan, financing. And I told him that the majority of it was coming back, whatever percentage that is, seventy-five or eighty percent coming back. And because of the timing of when we're going to get the loans, it's not going to impact us, um, or, or very little impact. So I want you to know that. The reason we're talking about it again is to have discussion because the intent is to come back, unless some of you are thinking otherwise, at the next meeting to do budget amendments and award the terminal. And so if we're going to do something different, we need to know that too because at some point, we need to keep the project moving. But based on what we heard last time and based on the analysis of funding, I think Ono hit it with his presentation last time. If that's the building we want, then we know it costs two point four, plus the extra cost, plus the engineering stuff we've already paid for or, or encumbered. We believe that we can do it with about a three fifty to four hundred thousand transfer. The transfer's a million four or whatever, but most of it gets paid back. So when I say three fifty, that's the net.
How long does it take for the reimbursement of funds?
I'm going to roughly say eighteen months at the most, but.
It's twelve to eighteen, I would think, because as soon as they give me documents, um, I can send off to the FAA and then Toby Baker with CEC provides invoices to, uh, the OAC. So up until the ninety percent, which you could talk about the.
Right, we, we get ninety percent of it, the whole ten percent till the very, very end when they do, uh, an audit and that's where they, both the FAA and the OAC would do that. But we could, in theory, get our first bill for say three hundred and fifty thousand and assuming that the items that they've done or the items for, that we had earmarked for the FAA funds, we go to the FAA right away and start withdrawing that money or the OAC at the same time. That money comes in within like a week or so. And we'll do that all the way to the ninety percent point and then we've got to wait for the last ten percent.
And how long will we give the contractors to complete the job? Was it a hundred and?
No, it, it's based on their bid and to tell you the truth, I don't remember what that was. It will be about a year, nine months to a year.
So it'll pretty much come together at the end at about the same time?
But once we, once we invoice the FAA, I get that within usually five to ten days and also with the OAC. So once it's time to start invoicing them, the money comes quickly. And they usually wait and send an invoice of, at the end of each month. So they have the finished product for this month and then we send off an invoice and then a finished product for the next month. So it's done partially, but if you do everything upfront.
Isn't a big chunk of that, isn't a big chunk of that because Lawton didn't use the money? Was that FAA money? I don't know. It's a half a million dollars.
Uh, remember about a year ago is when we started this and we were number three to get the OAC money behind Stillwater and Lawton. And Stillwater and Lawton both said, hey, we can't do it. So we moved to the front of the line.
For that reason alone, I think we need to move because that's a half a million dollars. That sooner or later, Stillwater and Lawton are going to be back at the table.
Right.
That's, that's a given.
So to move forward at the next meeting or the meeting after, they would bring to you the contract and we'd have the budget amendments to also do at that time. If you wait too much further, I believe the bids will expire. So there is a timeframe on that also.
Tell me what we need to do.
At the next meeting, we'll have agenda items to amend the budget and an agenda item to approve the project as bid, with the low bid being approximately two point four million, two point three eight five or something like that.
Do we get to, is there any penalty for the engineers for being as far off the mark as they were?
That's where I was going. We, I, I don't, there's not a.
It's not just like a little wrong.
There's not a penalty, but Ono and I have discussed it. I know he's discussed with them and I think they're committed to, the one change order you saw or actually amendment had to do with, Ono, can you speak to that? It was about the FAA because we're bringing FAA funding in.
Yes.
So they're not asking for anything different to change or do anything else but that, right?
Right. Typically, when, when any, anytime we do a project that involves FAA funding, there's a fee for administering the grant. And like I tell you, it, most mortals cannot do this. So we really, uh, we really rely on Cobb Engineering or CEC to handle that aspect for us. There's a lot of it involved. But that's the only bid that they're asking for.
Ben, we've had a lot of projects in this situation, not just this one.
Yeah.
Big time. But to me, it's a very valuable asset sitting out there, both for the city of Enid and Vance Air Force Base.
Okay, well, we, we will bring you those items at the next meeting for your consideration.
And if you're going to get it paid back and reimburse the accounts, that's even We are adjourned. We'll meet upstairs at six thirty.
Thank you for watching the Enid City Commission Study Session. All meetings are broadcast on local cable, channel twelve, and in high definition on channel one twelve. In addition, the study session is live streamed on the web at enitv.org. If you have any questions or comments regarding this broadcast, please visit the City of Enid website at enid.org.